Gallatin Planning Commission. And we've got a light agenda tonight, a light council, so, commission. So, there's a conference going on, so the mayor, city planner, and the attorneys are all at a conference tonight, so you're just stuck with us. But we'll go ahead and jump into the agenda, and we'll start with a public comment on agenda-related items. So if there's something on tonight's agenda that you wish to speak to, this would be your opportunity to come to the front and give us your name and address and make any comments. So with that, public comment on agenda items is now open. See, no one rushing to the front desperate to speak. We'll close the public comment, and we will move on to the first item, which is item two, the Meadows Phase 1A Final Master Development Plan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Brad Hickman, staff planner. The owner and applicant request approval of the final master development plan for the Meadows Phase 1A consisting of 20 lots on 19.6 acres, zoned R20 PRD, low-density residential, planned residential development district located west of Dobbin's Pike and north of Gibbs Lane. Mainly, we had comments about labeling, line weights, a lot of things left over from the previous conditions of approval when this was first approved in September 26, 2022. Other than line weights and some labeling, would like the elevations to be spelled out. This is the only one they submitted, so I'd like that to be specified. It's 70% brick or stone, which is the appearance of it. Also, engineering has a requirement upon resubmital of a stormwater memorandum and an updated traffic study, and I'll let Guillermo speak more to that.
Thank you. Do you have a representative for the applicant here tonight?
Brian Hamilton with Nashville Civil. And yes, we have the comments and have no problem with any of them. And the process of getting the traffic study updated, and I will talk to someone about the memorandum. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this seemed like it was just a pretty standard, just renewing the master development plan to keep it active. Is that, you know?
Correct, yes. Yes.
Okay.
We've talked to staff about what, yes, correct.
Yeah, I think the stormwater memorandum is pretty straightforward, doing everything now, but y'all can work that out. I don't really have any questions on this. It looks like it's pretty routine and straightforward. Any, anybody have any feedback for the applicant?
No questions.
All right, thanks. We'll see you back a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Item three is Kirkpatrick Gallatin, Phase 2 Final Master Development Plan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kimberly Atley, staff planner. The owner-applicant requests approval for an FMDP for the Kirkpatrick Gallatin Phase 2. It's zoned R8 PRD. It's located at south of Nichols Lane and west of West Woods Ferry Road. It's on approximately 32.61 acres. They're proposing 60 single-family lots ranging from 5,200 to 9,600 square feet. It's part of a larger development. This is Phase 2 of Phase 3, 4. There are no major issues with the PMDP. They just got finished with Phase 1 last month, so this is Phase 2, and it's pretty consistent with the FMDP.
Okay, thanks. Do we have a representative for the applicant? Is there anybody here for this item? What? Well, I guess, but you said it's fairly consistent with the preliminaries, so we typically don't have a lot of comments on these. Are you here for Kirkpatrick?
Yeah, right on time.
You are right on time. Don't even need to take a seat.
Perfect. I did have two really quick questions yesterday, actually.
Okay.
I feel like I normally don't. Keegan McCormick, Kimberly, I see you guys all good. I guess just real quick, for the phasing, we're gonna do four instead of three. Is that, how do we want to go about that, I guess would be the question, right? That was one of the comments that we had.
Yeah, I'll let staff address that up.
Phase 2 had a little bit more lots on here, so I think they're just cutting out, what, 60 lots?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So they'll probably do a Phase 3, so yes.
Correct.
Okay, so the same-
On the PMDP, there were three phases.
Okay, so instead of three, you're just gonna do four, but it's the same plan?
Correct. We're just splitting, yeah, we're splitting the old two into like two and three, and then doing the fourth.
I don't have any concerns with that.
The other one was, I just wanted to chat through the Greenway ADA compliance.
Right.
Like a three, it's like a three-to-one, four-to-one slope there on the Greenway to the northeast of that cul-de-sac.
Where are we talking about?
Yep.
Okay.
So the, on the northeast corner, it goes down, it's pretty steep. It's like a hill right now. So I just wanted to know how, what was the goal? How do we want to achieve that? You said like handrails and stuff, I just wanted to chat through it.
Yes, well, we were hoping that you can make a study and propose an ADA compliant for those Greenways.
Okay. That's all I had. Did you guys have anything else for me?
No, I think they said otherwise it was fairly consistent with the preliminary, so I think it was just those couple of questions, the ADA, probably the main one is looking for some option on that to make it compliant.
Cool. Thanks, guys.
All right, anything, anything else from anybody else? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving on. Item four, Habitat Examiner Court, rezoning with the preliminary master development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jim Carpenter, staff planner. The owner and applicant request to rezone 0.66 acres from the CS Commercial Services Zone District to the MRO, multiple residential and office zone district, with a PMDP for Habitat Examiner Court, residential development located south of Examiner Court and west of Sumner Hall Drive. Just for context, this is the Habitat Restore. Believe this is a cabinet company now. This was the former News Examiner building. The applicant proposes to have six-unit development, varying sizes, with pavilion amenity. Staff would like to confirm whether this will be a HPR or a platted lot product, and wants to confirm the type of materials used. Staff would recommend that they provide at least a brick water table or foundation cladding for these units. Future plan should also show buffer yards to the southeast. And then, would also like to say, we love the amount of landscaping that's on these renderings. We would like to see that come to fruition, however possible. With that, Plain Gallatin designates this area as part of the general urban community character district with a recommended density of five to 15 units per acre. This project, as proposed, would be just a touch over nine units an acre.
All right, thank you. Do we have a representative for the applicant?
Thank you, Jim. Plain Commissioners. Cal Gentry with Civil Land Company. I'm also accompanied tonight by Kate Ritchie, CEO of Habitat for Humanity, Joshua King, everybody knows him, he's on the board with me there as well, and then Mr. Leath and Ms. Allison from Greenlid. Typically, in a work session, I would just highlight a couple of points and move on, but if you would indulge me just for a minute, this is a new concept that we've been working on for quite some time in Habitat. We're always looking for new ways to house people that are a little bit different, but make a lot of good common sense. And I think what you'll find is that not only the concept of what we're doing here, but the units that we're building themselves, they're gonna appeal to not only the people who meet the criteria of Habitat for Humanity, which is a much higher standard than I think a lot of people even understand at this point, but this is a product I think that could work towards affordability throughout the city and Sumner County as well. If done right and controlled and following the, kind of the guidelines of this pocket neighborhood, just concept, I think this is something that Gallatin will be very, very proud of for a long time. So let me just run through real quick what a pocket neighborhood is, what a concept is. And just to define it, a pocket neighborhood is just a clustered group of neighboring homes gathered around like a shared open space. So you can see, it's just a few units gathered around a kind of a common area. But what this does is it provides opportunities for neighbors to meet and get to know one another. Parking's on one side, you're having to walk down the paths, past people's front yards and past their porches, nodding your head, saying hello, having conversations. It's just, it's a little bit deeper design into just sidewalks past houses. But it's focused primarily on creating community. There's a few key design essentials. We talked about the scale of sociability. If you think about going to a banquet, you're sitting at a table, or Thanksgiving, you're sitting at a table with 20 people. If you, as the meal progresses, you start to find that the conversations break off into threes and fours. It's this, you can't have a conversation with 20 people at once, so you end up with these smaller little clusters of people having conversations. Similar to neighborhoods, if you put, if this was a 50-unit deal, you would still do this in smaller little clusters where these individuals get a chance to build close-knit community with the people that live nearby them, that they're walking by on the way home from work, that they're out in the green areas playing with and working in their gardens alongside. So that scale of sociability is very important. There's a shared commons to everything, it's a place to stop and chat, and those conversations grow into relationships. But it has clear boundaries. There's a lot of fencing on this site to establish, this is where it starts, this is where it stops. So when someone who doesn't live there, a stranger or a visitor, or even Amazon guy's in there, immediately somebody's gonna say, "How can I help you? Who are you? What can you do?" Because that boundary also creates this safe place for people, safe place for people's childrens to get outside. There's these shared watchful eyes over the green areas with porches facing them and just everything being focused on sharing and community. The next key portion of this, and it's hard to tell from above, but all of these homes have a front porch, and it's not just a front porch that keeps your Amazon packages dry, it's room-sized, meaning there's enough room for chairs, there's enough room to sit down and talk, to invite someone up and have a conversation with them. The railings that you see are, they look cute, but they serve a purpose. They create that next kind of boundary of social interaction of, "Welcome onto my porch." And they're set low enough where there's always a place to sit, lean back, and have another conversation with somebody. So you're building these levels of interaction. And that's really what this is about, the design of this site. Let me go back to an oversize. You get this progressive level of connection. So it starts out big in the central green. "Hey, how you doing? Throwing a football? Nice to see you, keep going." Then you've got these garden walks where somebody's working in the front yard, you walk by, you nod your head, you say hello. "How's the weather? How's your kids? How's life? How's work?" The next level is this front porch. You get invited into this next progressive level of social interaction. That's a little more private, still out in the public. Beyond that, the interiors of the homes, which aren't shown in, just in the presentation tonight, the public areas are in the front. The dining room, the kitchen, the living room are all towards the front, just off that shared front porch. From there, it progresses back into the bedrooms and the bathrooms, and you end up with these private areas off to the sides and in the rear. And the houses, sorry, the houses are nested, so one side of a house, you've got windows, glass doors opening onto that little side yard area. The house beside it, the windows are transomed high, there's less play and light or visualization from inside that house onto that common area. So you create these little private side yards. It's another step back from these shared common areas into these private and more, just areas where you can spend time with just you and your family. So it's this thoughtful design from, from just a shared Greenway all the way to the bedrooms design in the house. Beyond that, there's a concept of corralling the car, meaning, car's not the thing you see when you drive in. You're gonna drive past this parking lot, and your eyes are gonna be pulled towards the units, pulled towards the green area. That's what you're gonna see. You put the cars off to the side, that fosters these trips and these interactions, because you have to walk from your car to your house, carrying your groceries, "Hey, can you give me a hand? Hey, your kid's riding a bike, how you doing?", that kind of thing. So you keep these cars kind of corralled in certain specific areas, but then you also keep eyes on those areas. If you'll notice, those two units next to the parking lot have their alongside to them, there will be windows that open onto the parking lot, eve lights that shine down into it. We have pole lights in it to make that area feel still protected and watched over, so that people aren't scared to park, walk down, that kind of thing. So it's, that portion of it's designed in as well. Thanks for letting me share that. That's that pocket neighborhood concept. Our site, as Jim said, six units. We have the central green, garden paths, room-sized porches, these nested private areas on the side with the corral cars. This site, I also want to say, and Jim pointed it out, it's right across the street from Habitat Restore, that's also their administrative offices. We see this as an extension of the corporate campus, meaning, this is what, when Kate has people come in who want to donate, give, or just be involved, she says, "Hey, come on, let's walk across the street, let me show you what Habitat Sumner County's doing." These units will be sold to the individuals, Jim, more than likely HPR, but we can work with y'all. I just don't think there's a good way to cut these up by fee simple. But Kate's also setting this up where, when they're ready to sell and move on, they sell it at market. We recapture, we rebuy those back in a program that recaptures that equity, and we run them back through the Habitat program, where this stays a Habitat site. Where most of them, they stay Habitat sites, but they can get sold to the general public, they keep moving. You get to keep your equity from when you buy into these homes. This one will be set up so that Habitat for Humanity, Sumner County, has this flagship that they can use to sell and introduce and explain and show what it is that we do. So this will stay kind of a part of that corporate campus. Units, hardy board primarily. This is, it's gonna be cute. You know, we'll work with staff on the water table, and that might be where the masonry kind of comes in, but these need to be, we need some flexibility on the colors and the textures and things like that, so we see these being primarily hardy board. But as you can see, with the flower boxes and the fences and things, you've got all those architectural elements that really, really make them stand out. The planning comments, fine, they'll be easy to work out. We did get a comment unexpected from FIRE, we'll sit down and talk to them about having to have a vehicular access within 50 feet of every unit. So that's, that's a little bit different from what we understood at the pre-App, so we'll work with them. You may see a little bit difference in the plan if we have to change something along those lines. And then, from a parking standpoint, we're parked two spaces per unit, and then we've kept some visitor parking there, parallel on the street. One thing we do want to work with engineering on is, we actually showed, so Examiner Drive is 36-feet-wide pavement. I assume it was put in wide like that before maybe the maple extension was done for an assumed east-west corridor there. So it's extremely wide, a lot of pavement. What we were hoping we could do is actually extend our curb line out into that first 12-foot lane, put our parallel parking there to neck the pavement down to 24. We can still fit on our side, that's fine. We just felt like there was so much pavement out there, it might be better suited to having more green space on our site and then replacing one of those extra drivelanes with parking. So that was, that's the comment that we want to discuss with engineering. We feel like we're adequately parked for visitors, and it's a new concept, so we didn't want to try to reduce below two spaces per unit, we feel that's appropriate. Trash, one thing that really wasn't covered in the preliminary master development plan, but there's not a great place to just set a 96-gallon, you know, individualized container. So the plan is, for those to actually, each six units, six cans, would actually sit here behind a fence that then the commercial pickup could just pull in, roll those up, dump them, and then back out, and he's gone. So they'll be screened, kind of like a dumpster, but rather than spending the money on a dumpster, it'll just be individual cans, because it's just single household stuff. So I've gone way longer than I ever usually do, and I apologize for that, but felt like it was appropriate. If y'all have questions for Kate, or Josh, or Andy, or anybody, we're here to answer those for you.
No, thanks for the explanation, it was-
It's different.
It's different, yeah.
We're super excited about it, as you can tell.
Who's gonna be responsible for the landscaping and the walkway maintenance?
It'll be an owners' association that the individuals will pay into, and then, of course, you've got Habitat as an oversight entity right across the street.
You have an idea what price range they're gonna be?
Kate can speak to that better. Yeah.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kate Ritchie, CEO of Habitat for Humanity. Thanks for having us tonight. We are hoping that the houses praise around 200 up to probably 325 for the three bedrooms. We don't want it to appraise more than that due to the nature of who we have moved into these homes. We target those that are between 40% to 80% area median income, so that is our preference.
That from 200 to 325, that's a pretty big spread.
Well, there's two one-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms, and two three-bedrooms. So those one-bedrooms are probably on the lower end.
Did you have any curiosity? Cal was talking about the buybacks, so how does that, so these will stay Habitat for Humanity homes so that they get essentially recycled or reused for the next?
Yes, so Habitat, just in general, wants to maintain lasting affordability. So there's really a shared equity program that's part of this. We do sell our homes at a 0% interest rate, which is the subsidy that the families get in order to purchase the home, but we will maintain a shared equity so that we can purchase the home back. Generally speaking, the vast majority of our families stay in the home for the 30 years of the mortgage and well beyond. However, there are some people, life circumstances happen, and they choose to move, and at that point, of course, our program is designed to build generational wealth, so we do want them to be able to capture some of that equity and move on to their next home, or if they have to move out of state or something. But we'll maintain that so that we can afford to purchase it back and put somebody else back in the program.
They have to live there for a certain amount of time before they can sell?
No.
And you asked me a question. Kate, explain, so the top end of this 80% AMI area median income, explain what that is like with a family of four.
So for a family of four, top end of AMI is around 80,000. The lower end is probably about 42,000, so these are really your civil servants, those that actually work for the government, those that are assistants in school, you know, firefighters, that's really who we target. Full-time, hard-working families that can't afford to live here outside of our program.
Is there any provision, this is, say, I purchased a $200,000 house, and six months later I want to rent it?
I'm sorry?
What if I purchase one at $200,000, and six months later I want to rent it out?
You can't rent them out.
Yes.
Yeah, we don't allow that, and this is their primary residence, and these are all first-time home buyers.
It's definitely addressing the need, because we have clearly an affordability concern in Sumner County, and especially in Gallatin, that a lot of the people who work here can't afford to live here anymore.
Correct.
I like the concept of the pocket neighborhoods. I was really, you know, glad to see the amount of detail you guys put into the packet when I was able to read it. So I think, you know, the only comment I really have on it is, I'd like to see staff in the city really work to help make this a reality, and, you know, I know we will, that's not a question, but, you know, I do think the masonry on the water tables from maintenance standpoint with the hardy board degrade, that's something I talk about a lot, but from a design standpoint, that's really the only comment I have, you know, thinking through it.
And no, I agree, I love the concept. I think it'll do well here. You guys answered, I mean, you addressed the questions I had, so I'm good.
I, I'll be curious to see how this works, because I think this is a concept where there are these, you know, acre or less parcels throughout the city where there could be a real opportunity for this to give access to more of that obtainable housing through the program, so I'm excited to see it come to fruition.
Hope to do this once and just keep repeating it.
Anybody else have any feedback? All right, looking forward to seeing it, come back and get built.
Thank y'all so much.
All right, thank you. Item five, Argento at 386, final plat.
Charlie Pierri, staff planner. The owner and applicant is requesting approval of the final plat for Argento at 386, consisting of three lots and right-of-way dedication to extend Beatty Boulevard to Greenlee Boulevard. This parcel is 40.26 acres, zoned as MU, mixed-use district, located south of Long Hollow Pike and east of Greenlee Boulevard. This proposed plat is fairly consistent with the, I forget the name of the development plan that's tied to this, and all the lot lines seem to match up and are consistent. Staff had some minor comments, mainly about the extension of the easements, and to have those further identified. Thank you.
As we have a representative for the applicant here.
Hello, my name is Mark Herrick, I'm with Reagan Smith. Just here to provide comments or any questions. Like Charlie said, the comments for the plat were pretty minor. I think they've, for the most part, been dealt with. The covenants and stormwater maintenance agreements have been completed and recorded. There is one item that I would like to bring up, and that is in relationship to the Lot 1, which is the Griffin. So there are two owners. There's a Griffin, who is the owner of the proposed Lot 1, and then there's a Sterling that are the owner of Lot 2 and what is gonna be the open space area. Griffin has become non-responsive, and there may be a desire to remove Lot 1 from this plat and just go with the Lot 2 and open space area. That decision hasn't been made, they're still trying to communicate with Griffin, but I'm not sure what that would do to this plat approval if we can remove the Lot 1 from this plat and still move forward with the approval.
Would this, in this question for the developer, this, would the lot still stay part of the master plan?
I don't know if I can answer, I apologize. I'm not heavily involved in this project, the, our surveyor, who is involved, cannot attend this meeting, so I'm just trying to be here to take his place. So I don't know the answer to that question, but we can provide that answer.
We wouldn't want this plat approved through Planning Commission if it's going to change. I would say, you guys figure that out before this comes to a voting meeting, and then you can resubmit with potentially that lot taken out, assuming it meets all the surveying requirements of plating a portion of a parcel. I think it has, everything has to kind of be a certain size to do that, the remainder has to be a certain size, so as long as that happens, then, and we figure that out before the voting meeting, I think that's okay.
Okay, okay. So we just need to make sure with the removal of that acreage that it still meets the preliminary plan approval.
Well, just that it meets like state law with surveying. That would be the biggest part.
Yeah, and I believe it's seven and a half acres, has frontage, street, public street frontage, so I believe it meets all the survey requirements as far as a legal parcel.
Five acres.
It's seven and a half, I believe.
Yeah, seven and a half.
So the remainder can be, so that remainder's big enough?
Correct.
Brian?
Correct.
Okay, then yes, you could theoretically take Lot 1 out, but I'd want you to do that before it was voted on.
Right, yes, yes, and that would, and like I said, they're still, they're not real sure how, what's gonna happen here, but we wanted to kind of make everyone aware- what's gonna happen here, but we wanted to kind of make everyone aware of the situation, and if it is decided that Griffin is pulled out of this plat, and he's, because he's not willing to sign the plat at this point, that we can still move forward with this approval, and it's not gonna hold up the, the recording process.
I think to, to staff's comments, I would, I would want this all worked out and an updated plat. I, I would not be comfortable doing this under conditions or us, you know, removing it as a condition. I'm not, I don't think that's gonna work.
Right, right now, we kind of have two versions of the plat. One, one with Griffin out of the plat, and one with him still included in the plat, just to see which direction this is gonna go.
I, I think, you know, if, just feedback for, for everybody, if, if it comes back with the plat, the lot removed from the plat, I would just want to, some good clarity from staff that it still meets all the conditions and everything's compliant, that we're not creating any problems.
Yeah, the biggest thing would be, I don't remember with the apartment development, if that access to Long Hollow was required or not? Where those easements go up?
Yeah, I believe right through there.
Mm-hmm.
It's my understanding that a declaration was recorded that established those various easements, so it's outside the plat.
Okay. Which, that's, that's fine, but that would be, that would be my other question from a master plan standpoint.
Exactly. Those are things that if, if, if this has the potential to change the circulation of the rest of the project, then that becomes a much larger concern, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, we would, so resubmit is, I believe, Monday. If you guys don't know by Monday, I would recommend you defer, and then let us know what you're gonna do, so that we can do a full review of it and make sure it's good.
Pass that along. And so other than that, I think everything else is, is in order and on track. It was just this little hiccup with the ownership.
Understood.
So anyways, okay.
I don't, I don't have any other feedback on it, I'm working that out. Anybody else have any comments? Feedback? All right.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right, that ends the agenda. It goes down to other business. I asked Gillian just to give us a quick update on the zoning ordinance project and kind of what the process is from here as that keeps moving.
Yes. So we are currently working as a staff to compile comments that we received internally from staff, from other departments, from various people of the public, and other people who have been involved. We appreciate everybody's feedback that had given us feedback. So we are going to have comments back to our consultants by Friday of this week. So we've been working very diligently on kind of, look, going through them and doing the ones that we can do, and, and reviewing the ones regardless of if we can or can't. And then we expect the consultants to take another month or two to put those comments formally into the document. And so then we're anticipating probably October to maybe have a version that we can start the process, but that's, that is where we are at today.
Thank you. Glad to see it moving along. Any other announcements?